Before I forget, if you did get an agenda, if you turn it to that page, there's a minor and minor correction down towards the bottom under announcements where it states there will be a Lawrence County Opioid Advisory Board meeting, it probably says today. Please scratch the word today. That meeting takes place one week from today on February 6th. If you wanted to make note of that correction. We always start our meeting with pledge allegiance and then we would ask that you remain standing and we'll have a brief moment of silence. Joe, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Sinado.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Here. We have a forum. Under explanation of procedures, we, during the course of our public meeting, we always set aside the two opportunities for public comment. One will be in just a few moments and then before we adjourn, we always reopen it for any public comment that anybody might have. You're welcome to speak one of those two times, both of those times, or if you're just here to observe, that's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters and we would also ask as a courtesy to everybody's schedules, if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes, if you would please. Next on the agenda is row officer reports and comments and we always set aside time during our meeting if any of our row officers happen to be here, if they wish to make any comments, but it doesn't appear that any of them are here today. So next on the agenda would be public comments. If you'd like to speak, I'll, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you if you'd be kind enough to enter, to tell us who you are so we could enter your name into the record for the, for the minutes. So I'll open the floor. I'll open the floor. Yes, sir. I saw your handle up first.
My name's Dan Bailey. This is Moncrey. We both are from Vision Ministries. We were here to inquire about, well, I see it's on your agenda for next week. You already addressed it. We were going to talk, ask about some questions about the opioid settlement and the progress there and where that's headed. So if it's okay, can we attend on February 6th?
Those are public meetings. They're legally advertised as such and that would be 12 noon, one week from today, right in this room. And Joe might have to help me. I'm trying to remember who all sits on that board. In no particular order, the district attorney, Mr. Lannan Pousa, Mr. Vanasco, our county administrator, President Judge Mato, Scott Baldwin from MHDS, Mental Health Developmental Services, Deputy Warden Steel Vogel, I know I missed John, John Vaut from CYS. And again, those meetings are open to the public. What they do is they work together to determine, from an advisory standpoint, how the opioid funds that the county has received from the legal settlements will be distributed. And the ultimate decision in terms of how they are distributed rests with the Board of Commissioners, but we obviously put a great deal of stock in what they have to say.
We're familiar with the process because we were fortunate enough to acquire some of the grant money for 2003, 2004. We're just trying to find out the uptake. What's the plan for this year? When applications will be accepted and that type of thing. We want to keep the process going.
Hopefully your schedules will allow you that time on next Tuesday. You're open. We'll make it here. Okay. Thank you, sir, very much. I saw one hand. Leslie, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Leslie Butchie from the Shannick Township. I'm here to discuss Roman numeral number eight, ordinances, and I'm talking about the receiving of ordinance 2020-4 and the implementation of ordinance number one of 2024. We were here last Tuesday, January 23rd, to discuss this and we are just back here, when I say we, Joe Gerlov and I are here on behalf of the Shannick Township and I know there's a lot of other communities here that are not in favor of you repealing that ordinance. I don't want to go back over everything because you'd already heard us once. We know that the county's responsibility is not to maintain roads in Lawrence County. It is the municipalities, the boroughs and the city, their responsibility to do that. We understand that the majority of your use of your liquid fuels money is for bridges and we're not denying that. And I understand the difficult position you're in. But again, this, this money and this ordinance that was passed back in 2021 brought money into the county that was never here before and has given the opportunity to all township residents, township, I should say, municipalities, boroughs, city can apply for that money to assist them with the road paving. We, as municipalities have, it's, it's been, the last couple of years have been great. COVID provided ARPA money. There's been a lot of money out there, which has allowed us to do some extra things in our communities. But to take money away that we're getting from the state, that we really have no means to get back from the state anyway, seems, it just seems irresponsible to me to do. I think that, you know, the fact that we have it, I don't understand, and I know that Commissioner Sinado and yourself, Dan, have said that it's the principle of the matter, that you didn't agree with it originally, but you have it here now. And I know the state isn't going to come up with another way to give us $400,000. I noticed in, I believe it was the article, there was a comment about that there is block grant money. Some municipalities don't qualify for that. And that's based on like the standard of what the income is across the board. And so I know in the Shannick Township, we would not qualify for block grant money. We do qualify for liquid fuels money if it's available and we do apply for that as well. But again, the only means we have to make up for this money that we won't be able to apply for again is to raise taxes in our community. And I believe that when I have to raise taxes or we as a board have to raise taxes in the Shannick Township, in order to get the 150,000 or the 50,000, we've got to at least raise taxes point 20. And it's not going to be $5 a year. It's going to be more like $40 a year. That may not sound like a lot of money, but anytime you raise somebody's taxes, they always come back to you and want to know why and you have to explain it. And that's going to be our reason. If we can't get the liquid or the Act 89 money anymore, we're probably going to be, you know, having to let our residents know if we're raising taxes to do more paving. That's the reason for it. And I just, you know, we respectfully come to you today and ask you as township officials across Lawrence County, that we really don't want this ordinance repealed. And I know that the decision is ultimately up to the three of you, but we feel that it's a mistake to give that money back to the, well, and I guess, you know, you're saying it's all of the residents being overburdened in tax. It's $5. And I just feel like, I think, I saw a letter to the editor the other day that talked about this. The cost of a stamp today is 68 cents. It's costing people 42 cents a month for this $5 registration fee. And I just think that it's in the community's best interest to keep it. And hope other municipalities will share their thoughts on it as well.
Thank you very much. Before I call on Mr. McKinley, I neglected to mention that the meeting is being livestreamed and also recorded. I try to mention that at the beginning of each meeting. I forgot to today. So, Mr. McKinley, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Grant McKinley. I'm a supervisor with North Beaver Township and I'd ask you folks respectfully to keep Act 89 and not to repeal it. I think with our surrounding counties that have the $5 tax licensing fee, they are enacting it and using it. And I think it would put Lawrence County farther behind, is my opinion. Besides what Leslie had to say, again, I won't go back through what I said last week. That's our thoughts.
Thank you. I appreciate your sharing, Grant. Mr. Burchett?
To change the subject, Bob Burchett, to change the subject, I was here last week and a fellow from Arise came in and some, I was amazed how he could come in and walk out with $130,000 for some project that he had gone about. Really not aware of Arise. It's another sort of a women's shelter and they want to build a halfway house. And I, I know they have the house on the shelter on West State Street and I fail to see the need for this shelter, which took $130,000. And with the, if it's going to be a shelter that I imagine, the upkeep and continued expenses with this. I'm not sure whether Arise, is Arise part of the county government?
They are not. They are an independent agency. I believe they the, from the state that passes through our Mental Health and Developmental Services Office, correct me if I'm wrong, we're all for it. So the funding that they are receiving for this project, again, Joe told me, I'm, I'm of the understanding that this organization is eligible to receive.
It's set out, you, you don't get the legislative books or anything, do you?
The mental health office who's contracted with them can do an administrative review and they do them each year with the provider.
I was wondering if they take in illegal aliens into their facilities nowadays?
I don't know the answer to that. My understanding is that they take in abused women. And I don't know that they looked at other factors. I think their major concern is protecting abused women and children as well.
I was concerned that the, they were being overrun and they want to expand their facilities. And like any government organization, once they get started, there's no ending to it.
Okay. I thank you. Thank you, sir. Just to clarify, the gentleman that was here last week about this was Mr. Baldwin, Scott Baldwin, who is our director. He works with the county. He's director of the Mental Health Developmental Services Office. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Burchett. Other, yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Dick Bear from Indian Township, but I'm here to represent the sportsmen in Lawrence County and most of the township. We're concerned about the property at the industrial park over there between the Harbor Road and the river being posted. And we don't know if the county's posted it or whether an independent, but this is a good recreational place. A lot of guys don't want to go in there and fish and they can't.
First of all, it's good to see you, Mr. Bear. I haven't seen you for a long time.
It's been a long time.
Yes, sir. You're talking about the property on, right by the Shenango River in the Shannick Township on King's Chapel Road. Does that sound right?
I think it's King Chapel or Harbor. I always call it the Harbor Road.
Leslie's here.
And it, if I might say, it is posted and I believe it was posted by the people that own the property, the Lawrence County Economic Development Authority. And I, but I don't, I think it's a hunting posting. I don't think they stop you from using the right of way along the river to fish. And the boat launch is right there that you can get in on the river. But I do know that it is posted because we received calls about the fact that people that used to have their hunting, I don't know what they call them, tree stands, in the area that they pulled them down and people weren't even able to recover them.
And correct me if I'm wrong, some of that property in that vicinity is privately owned. Is that correct? Yeah, it would be on the north side of King's Chapel Road, where the, where the old railroad track leads up to the, the well site.
Some of it is, yes.
Some of that privately.
Yeah, Newcastle Railroad has some of it. They're, well, the Houston property was purchased by the Lawrence County Economic Development. There is one other, I think, private, but it's all now in LCEDC, other than Newcastle Railroad, because we have a right of way through there for sewer.
Right.
And we do have to do an inspection annually that we're not getting into the property.
I appreciate you're offering that. And Mr., and I don't mean to put Dan on the spot, but Mr. Kennedy sits on the board of the Economic Development Corporation. I don't know if you want to look into that for Mr. Bear?
We can.
Okay.
It is a good recreational place for fishing and a lot of people were concerned that they couldn't go in there anymore and fish.
I think you would be able to, there's a right of way along the river that you should be able to utilize to get into the river. And the boat launch, of course, is right there.
Yeah, this is the boat, boat launch down there, 376.
Oh, okay, going that direction.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. I was, I was thinking the other direction.
Yeah, it's right across from Steel Lake. You know, the, across the road from Steel Lake.
But off, but north of King's Chapel?
Talking about how it goes back underneath it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you talking north of King's Chapel, though?
Northwest. I, I don't, I call that the Harbor Road. I didn't know.
Well, that isn't it. So King's Chapel goes from Pulaski down to the stop sign where the boat launch is. And then Pulaski Harbor Road would be, I think it's State Route 4004.
Yeah.
That goes, which some people refer to as heads towards Maitland Lane. But, you know, I think it's confusing if you look on any, even the state maps, they don't list it properly.
Right.
But yeah, I think, you know.
He's talking about the facility that when you come around the bend on that road, there's like a.
So you're talking Pulaski Harbor Road?
Yes, but there's like a, you can tell that it's used. It goes back off to the right before you get to Steel Lake, but the facility he's talking about is right across from it. They fish underneath the ridge.
So right over by the river, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, again.
Between the road and the river, yeah, it's all posted.
They post that. But again, that property you should be able to use to be able to get down to the river. I don't think.
When it's posted, you can't use it. That's.
I think there is like a dirt road that goes across from Steel Lake's entrance.
Yeah, there is.
Have you seen that?
It's posted.
The road is?
Yes.
It's like a dirt road?
I think it's all road.
Okay. And maybe between, between Supervisor Butchie and Mr. Kennedy, as I mentioned, he sits on the board. Mr. Bear, unless you have to leave, could you maybe give your phone number privately?
I'll be here.
Okay. We'll get your contact information.
Okay.
Leslie, thank you for your help with that. I appreciate it. I apologize. I was picturing a different location.
Okay.
From what you were referencing, so forgive me for that.
Well, I, I don't know the name of the road. That's the problem.
We'll, we'll get to that.
I think it's the Harbor Pulaski Road or.
That is the Harbor Pulaski Road where you're talking about. But there is like, I know we access the Lip Station. We go two different directions to Millennium.
Right.
And that dirt road, I mean, we, I see people parked along there all the time that actually must be down there fishing because I think it's just a matter, I think it's posted for hunting, though.
Well, actually, it's probably mostly in the safety zone until you could hunt it anyhow because of the residents that are around here.
Probably.
Thank you.
We're looking at this.
I appreciate your help. Thank you, Mr. Bear.
Thank you.
Are there other, Mr. Rishel?
Morning, sir. I'm Brandon Rishel. I'm Shenango Township Supervisor and representing here with also Frank Augustine Supervisor, Joe Pasco that's Supervisor, and now Buick, it's the Township Manager. Here to speak to you guys today about ordinance number four, 2020. Hope you reconsider what you're doing here. I was unable to attend last Tuesday's meeting, so I'm not apprised of all the information that was given out there, but just a few things that mean a lot for the Shenango Township, South Newcastle Borough that we now represent and, you know, the voters of our community that are here. As you know, the money that's generated into this is key to all communities in Lawrence County in maintaining and improving critical infrastructure. That falls short across the board. We know that across the state of Pennsylvania, if you talk to PennDOT on a daily basis as I do, they fall short every single day. They have no way to fund the problems that they have, nonetheless, to help us with the concerns that we have. This money, this money in some of the communities is up to 30% of the road maintenance budget that's there. This is a huge amount of money to a lot of the communities that you're impacting by your decisions today. By rescinding this ordinance, you're forcing local level elected officials to raise property taxes, property tax. These are the people that have invested into our community. We've bought and invested and decided to stay here. There's thousands and thousands of cars that are out there that are registered in Lawrence County that these people have no profit. We have 1,800 low-income housing units within Lawrence County. None of those people are being billed anything to utilize the infrastructure that they utilize every single day driving down the roadway. I hope that you consider those things. This being said, the burden and cost falls upon the most invested people into our community, the property owners. And once again, we're the ones that hold the burden of everybody. This isn't right. You're taking away the cars that drive down the roads and that wear out our infrastructure and you're telling the property owners they're the ones that are half a foot the burden of us. I hope you guys really, really, really consider what you're doing and the impact upon, as all decisions that every one of us elected here have, have consequences. Your consequences of your actions today, if you decide to rescind this, is going to be our resolution that will be passing.
Guys, mine, mine, I'll pass it not to you.
On Thursday, the 8th. On Thursday, the 8th, we have no other opportunity than to raise the taxes and taxpayers of Shenango Township in South Newcastle Borough because we have no way to take this critical infrastructure money out of our budgets. I hope that you really, really, really consider what you're doing and the impact upon all Lawrence County residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Pasco, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Other comments anybody would wish to make? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Kathy Rents. I'm from Shenado, or from the Shannick Township. I was impressed with the statement from the Shenado representative. Also, Leslie Butchie quoted my letter to the editor. I, I'm not official in any way with the Shannick Township, but when I saw this, I thought, this is money that's already coming out of our citizens' pockets. 42 cents a month. I, I really would wonder what the citizens would do with that 42 cents if they had it back. I think it's ridiculous to take money that's already been appropriated for the townships to fix our roads, to take it away. Why? What does it benefit Lawrence County to do that? So I thank you to reconsider the option to rescind this $5 fee.
Thank you, Mrs. Rents. But I saw, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm John Logue. I live in the Shannick Township. I rise to speak also on ordinance number one. I moved to Western Pennsylvania from Southern New Jersey. So I'm impressed by saying nobody needs to tell me about taxes. I, I'm impressed with the taxing structure in Western Pennsylvania. Having said that, you now already take the $5. If you take that away, these municipalities are now going to be forced, as has already stated, to raise property taxes. Those property taxes are going to be raised on everybody in that community, including perhaps senior citizens and people in retirement communities who don't drive. They're going to pay it, whether it's through their rent or whether they directly pay it to the municipality. In Shenago, in the Shannick Township is going to have two alternatives. Either cut back the road program, which I have to tell you is one of the most excellent programs I've seen. They do a wonderful job of maintaining our roads. So they either cut the program back, which they're not going to do, or they raise property taxes. I strongly urge you not to adopt the ordinance to rescind the fee that's being charged. People are already used to paying it. They're paying it to maintain the roads that the cars they register drive on. So I strongly urge you not to adopt this ordinance and leave the fee in place.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your being here today. Other comments anyone would care to make this time? Yes, Leslie?
Can I just say one more thing? So I'm, I'm assuming from your resolution that you're opening your budget back up in order to repeal it, correct?
Well, number one, I don't think that the.
Address taxes.
It's going to be addressed at the next tax. The resolution has to be passed by ordinance. We're just formally going through with the resolution to say that we're going to do it by ordinance when it comes out. I don't think that you can repeal it mid-year. The people in January that paid registration should be pretty upset if the people in April don't have to pay it. So I think your repeal, if you choose to do so today, which I hopefully you don't, you know, can't be rescinded mid-year. I, I find that really, really constitutional illegal to do that. I, I'm shocked to think that somebody in the same physical year, just because you rescind it come February, it's just going to go away. So it would be to replace the money that's not there for the 2025 year, physical year.
I think, so what I was asking is, I don't know what your resolution says. I'm assuming you are opening your budget back up to increase taxes. I'm assuming if you're saying that.
Leslie, we couldn't, you can't.
By February 15th.
Yeah, if it's too late, all the tax bills are already printed at this point.
Yours are?
Yes. Yeah, so we couldn't actually do that yet.
I thought that maybe this was what you were doing. So, and I think we talked about it last Tuesday, that I don't think, even though you repeal it in mid-year or even in the second month of the year, that you would be able to, it takes a whole year to fix this, I believe, from what I'm hearing from other counties. When you repeal it, you're still going to pay, like if you get a new bill, you're not going to pay it probably. They're going to eliminate it. But I, I'm not even sure about that. I think it actually goes for a full year that they have to be charging for it and then next year it would be slowly worked out.
My understanding is that there will be a cutoff point based upon PennDOT's regulations governing this. I thought I had seen something to the effect of a 90-day period.
Okay.
We'll look into that. Yes, sir, Mr. Rishel?
Just one last thing. There was no less in the last week than 50 voters in our community, multiple elected officials that have talked within the last week. And the biggest person you're impacting in our community is the most elderly. This is the elderly people that no longer drive and no longer have vehicles that live in our communities that are not being represented here. You are doing ill will by all of Lawrence County by doing this.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Barth? Scott Barth, North Beaver Township Supervisor. I saw on social media last, last week that you guys were meeting with Fitzgerald from Allegheny County. Did he have an opinion on this at all?
We met with him in his capacity as the new director of the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission. And he indicated that Allegheny County did implement the $5 fee. They have over 400 miles of county roads and I forget how many bridges, 500, 500 bridges? And I was of the understanding, unless I misinterpreted his comments, that the county keeps those dollars for their needs. Now, as we've noted, Lawrence County has no roads or streets whatsoever. We have 27 bridges. But I walked away from our conversation with Mr. Fitzgerald with the understanding that it's earmarked for the county roads and the county bridges. Now, maybe my colleagues understood him differently.
But it helped them, though, also in the county.
Yes, it did. It did. And, and as was noted, someone else made a comment that two of our neighboring counties have implemented this fee, Butler and Beaver. Mercer County, on the other hand, their commissioners have chosen not to. And the majority of counties in Pennsylvania have not implemented this fee. Free, in fact, initially implemented it and have rescinded it. And my numbers might be off a little bit. The last The last I saw, there were forty-one who have not implemented it and twenty-six do have. I don't know if that number has changed.
Forty-four have.
Forty-four do not have. But yes, we did have that conversation with Mr. Fitzgerald. Anything else, Mr. Barth? Joe, I'll get to you in just a second.
Brian Swisher, Wilmington Township. I know I really shouldn't speak. I've been a truck driver all my life in this county, forty, over forty-four years. Now, I'm a township supervisor, Wilmington Township, Lawrence County. And about two years ago, there was a motorcycle accident. And I brought up the issue of horseshoes with our Amish community. Now, Chris spoke last week about when he was in legislature, he voted against this. Now, this goes not just for our county, but for the whole Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Lancaster, Wilmington Township, all of them that have the Amish in their community. Nobody in the legislature wants to address them using our roads or charging them money to use our roads, which they absolutely are hard on. When I broke, when I brought this horseshoe incident up because of a fatality, my business went to absolutely boom. It hurt me. So the same way with the legislature, it'd be political assassination to bring it up, but it needs addressed. Lancaster, Wilmington Township, Wilmington, Mercer, all of us in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. An Amishman waiting for his ride yesterday out my township building, said that he read the article in the paper, and he said, what is five dollars? He said, and that goes to us here. He goes, I would pay fifty dollars per buggy if it went to our roads in our townships. So that's something that needs addressed also. I know I reached out to a group in Ohio. They already imposed a church tax for their buggies. Danny Ray Gingrich is the man I spoke with there. This is over the horseshoe deal. And so even the Amish know that there should be a responsibility for them using our roads. Also, I know this doesn't have to do with you guys rescinding it, but I absolutely do not understand any reason to rescind the five dollars.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gerald?
Before I ask my question, Brian, I agree with you because they use our roads too. And we paved the road two years ago and the tracks on them
Still working on the horseshoe deal.
Bad. My question was to you guys, the three counties that rescinded their offer, what was their, why would they backen out of it? Giving money to their constituents?
My recollection is that Luzern County, I think Fulton, but please don't hold me at Fulton. And then my understanding is Cambria recently did it. I don't know the specific reasons. I don't know if it happened when there was a change in who was holding the positions. Luzern County, for example, is a home rule county. They don't have a three-member board of commissioners. They have a county council. And I would speculate, it's only speculation, that the change was made when there was a new group of elected officials coming into office. But I don't know the specific reasons from those three counties. Yes, ma'am?
What you just said about a change in office indicates to me that it might have been more political than practical in those counties. And in addition, all of our counties are very different and have very different needs. I don't really think it should impact us, what they're doing in Luzern County or Fulton County or anyplace else. This is Lawrence County, and we have our specific needs. Not everybody has, as you said, problems with the Amish roads. I, for one, when it's raining and go around a curve on that, there's a farm that sells wood products there. I've almost fishtailed on that because the roads have rats in them. Anyway, I agree.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just have one question for the board. How many people have you talked to that want you to rescind this? Because we haven't found one yet in our community.
I've heard from both sides of the issue. In all candor, in the last week, I've heard from more people. Today's a good example. I've heard from more people who would like for us to keep it, but I have heard from both sides on the issue. Dan or Chris?
Chairman, can I have the
Of course.
I did a lot of research on this, and I'm a numbers guy. I probably whacked out there sometimes, but the word District Eleven, we have Allegheny, Beaver, and us. Allegheny County, for the municipalities, Notford County, receives thirty-six million dollars a year in liquid fuel money for the townships in that county. Beaver, a little over six million. Lawrence County, just under four million dollars a year. Put that out per mile, Allegheny County gets about eight thousand four hundred dollars per mile of road to get out to fix. For the municipalities, Notford County. Beaver County's at six thousand two hundred, and here we are, Lawrence County, fifty-three hundred dollars. Lawrence County is always at the end of it. I was looking at the map on projects that District Eleven is doing. You look at them and they got red dots, black screens. You get Allegheny, you get Beaver, you get up to Lawrence County, as we all know, we get none. I'm on the economic board, and one thing Ben Bush and I have talked about is moving this county forward. What can we do? Well, if we do this today, we're going backwards. So if we do this backwards, you know, this Ben Bush is a thirty-six-year-old man that's trying his hardest to get Lawrence County moving forward. We drive this backwards, I don't know why we even have them working here because it's useless. You know, we're going down a road that we don't need to get down. We need to have infrastructure, get this county moving forward. You guys all know where I stand. It's irritating to have to put up with this the first month in office. And I'm just, I gotta keep doing what I gotta do. When I went and I campaigned, I campaigned for the people of Lawrence County. That was my campaign. I'm going to work for the people of Lawrence County. And I will continue to work for the people of Lawrence County for the next four years if they'll have me. But I'm fighting, trying to get there. Right now, I don't. I looked over numbers per township, and in two thousand nineteen was the highest we got in Lawrence County. Four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, almost sixteen thousand. The next year, we were at four million, one hundred and ninety-nine. We lost a hundred and sixteen thousand. You guys each lost a little chunk of change. Twenty-twenty-one, we were down to three million, eight hundred and ninety thousand. We lost another four hundred and twenty-four. Total for two years, five hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, thirty-three dollars. We go to twenty-twenty-two, we dropped again, three million, seven hundred and ninety-six. We lost one million, sixty thousand dollars in three years. Last year, twenty-twenty-three, we're down, we went up a little bit. We went to three million nine. So we were still, from the, from the beginning of twenty-nineteen, we were still down over four hundred thousand dollars. The five dollars picks up to four hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how many you have to raise taxes in the last few years with COVID and all the crap we had to go through. There's where the money's coming from, the five-dollar tax that we don't have to put on the people. I don't know what the number's going to be until, I think, February eighth, I'll get the numbers of what they're going to be in twenty-twenty-four. But I'm going to tell you right now, most likely, every one of you guys are going to have more money taken away from you in liquid fuel money. You know, being a township supervisor, I was for two years. I learned a lot. Brian's only been there two years. He learned a lot. And we learned to stretch an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year budget to get everything done. Last year, we did more roads in Wilmington Township than we did anywhere. We got fifty thousand dollars on that tax. And there's earmarked another fifty thousand for a project that didn't get done. Brian's got his hands full after what he's got to do, and he's trying his hardest. And if they take this away, the only thing he can do next year is do the same thing that Shenandoah Township's doing. And it's going to be more than what you guys are going to make, so. There's my spiel. You two, I hope you, some wanting you to recite it, to let this thing go, drop. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Pizzola?
I'm supervisor of Maudie Township. You've been a commissioner for a long time, and I've been a supervisor for a long time. We've had a lot of good stuff together, and you gave us fifty thousand last year. We put in only a hundred thousand dollar budget, but with fifty-one mile of roads. So everybody knows here where it goes, goes nowhere. So if you take it off of us, it's going to be fifty thousand more. We can't raise taxes. We're at the end of the line with the soil plant and everything that we got going on, so. You can keep it, and we can use it.
Thank you, Gary. Chris, I'll follow you in just a second. Mr. Riddle?
Hi, I'm just Rob Ecker, Union Township. Just want to say we're also in favor of keeping it and asking you to just really consider that we understand you guys are the county commissioners, but everybody sitting here is what makes up your county. And it seems very clear that everybody here needs this tax and wants it. So we would just also ask that you please keep it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sinon, I didn't mean to jump ahead, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I tried to listen to what you said last week, and I think I listened lively. I appreciate all your input. I appreciate the work that you all do in your local municipalities. This has been an issue of mine, and listening to what you're saying about raising taxes. We all have budgets. There are budgets at county level. We have to have a balance, but you all have our balance budgets. If there's more money, you can spend more. If there's less, you spend less. You have an option now. You can pave every road in your municipality if you raise taxes hard enough to do it. I would recommend to do it, which is you have that option and ability. We're talking the five dollars. That five dollars is going back into your residents' pockets. They can send it to you. I heard a gentleman last week said he has six vehicles. He has an option. Everybody who's supporting this, and I talked to people this week as well that called me, and I said, well, send your money to your local municipality. With this whole funding system, which I've studied over the last two weeks, it's very inequitable. Very inequitable. The area that has the most cars is the city of Newcastle. It's a population of twenty-two thousand. They're pretty much subsidizing most other municipalities in Lawrence County. Is that really fair? Shannick, which is probably a break-even point for that. But I think all the rest actually are being subsidized by the city of Newcastle. So I look at that, and I see those numbers. So if your residents want this five dollars, they can send it into your municipality, and you'll be able to get those dollars back. I mean, I look at this, we're not shutting off the spigot here. Commissioner Bover said last week, we're going to continue to keep you our excess liquid fuel money. I mean, we have a responsibility for twenty-seven bridges, and that's what our focus has to be on. And I know that it is very frustrating. I know you have a difficult job to do. You're on the front lines. But nowhere has anyone talked about, talked calling your senators or your state rep and your, and your state senator. If you're not happy about the formula, talk to them. It comes out of Harrisburg. They could shift money, take the state police out of transportation fund and put more money into the liquid fuel funds. Your job is to deliver money to you as well. We have a very limited budget up here. Our focus is to budget the county revenue sources. We have issues we're going to have to deal with. We're talking four hundred thousand dollars here. What I've studied, looking at the research of building a road, that pays for like one mile? One mile for the whole county? So, I mean, I respectfully don't ask you to use this as an excuse to raise taxes on your residents. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're going to look at. I mean, those are your choices. You can pave every road in your municipality if you chose, if you choose to do that. But at this point, I look at this thing as, look, I voted against this in two thousand twelve. I was opposed then, I'm still opposed now. I make it very clear. The way this whole thing went down with that thirty-cent gas tax, I remember the gas tax raisers, when they were walking around the Capitol, they're big lobbyists, you know, talking about, oh, it's only thirty cents. Yeah, only thirty cents, not so many gallons, which hurts rural Pennsylvania. It doesn't hurt the urban centers. That's what this was about. And I made a promise. I made a promise a year ago when I decided I'm going to run for county commissioner. This was an issue then. It's in my mail piece. It's in the newspaper ad. It's on my radio ad. I don't, I mean, I don't say things, then I get elected and don't do it. I mean, I've served with hypocrites who say anything they want. They get in and they don't do it. I use an example, this so-called term limit that they all talk about. The time comes, and guess what? They're still there. They're still there. So I want to give you, you know, you have to have credibility. You have to be able to keep your word. And my word is going to be there. I made the commitment to the voters of Lawrence County. I know, it's only five dollars, right? It's only five dollars.
Whether it's right or wrong.
It was only thirty cents. Well, guess what? I think it's fair and reasonable. Yes, Leslie?
So you, you're saying that the city of Newcastle is subsidizing all of our communities?
That's exactly what you said.
Five cars, seven cars, ten cars in somehow.
But I have, I have an album, Mike. Excuse me, let, one, one person at a time, please. Mrs. Butchie has the floor.
I said that the populations in the city, they have more cars in the city than they do. And most of them are rarities.
And they drive on all the towns.
Absolutely. I, I absolutely
Ladies and gentlemen, please, one, one person at a time, please. Mrs. Butchie still has the floor.
So I am still confused by your comment. And, and last year, when this came up, because I was here when it came up last year, we asked all the municipalities to let the commissioners at that time know how we all felt. And the city of Newcastle was quoted in the paper as saying they were a hundred percent behind keeping this five-dollar because it helps them as well. I don't know whether they asked for it or not. I, I'm not really privy to that until I see it in the newspaper. But I, I think, you know, when we all run for office, obviously, it's political. Okay? When you walk in the door here and take the job, it becomes, you know, there should not be any politics to this. It should be about doing the job for the people that are in your community, not thinking about some political promise that you made to a few people to get votes. And in all fairness, where are those people today that wanted you to keep, to get away, to get rid of the five dollars? I haven't heard any of them here saying that we want you to get rid of it. You know, we, we think it's ridiculous. I, I think a five-dollar fee across Lawrence County for anybody that can afford to own a vehicle is not too much money. And I think that it is political. I know, you know, I worked as a secretary treasurer in a township for a long time before I ever walked in the doors as a supervisor. And when I became a supervisor, I realized how important it was to not be political. I have to represent everybody. It can't be because I, I think this guy over here is wrong because of his political opinions. I have to represent everyone in that community, and that's your job as a Lawrence County commissioner. Your job is to look at everybody within our community, and I'm sure you got a lot of votes from Nishanik Township.
Yes, I did, and I am representing.
Okay, and so those people, you know
If your voters are so anxious, why are you mailing those checks?
She was the poor, why is she not giving her They're, they're not, they're not going to mail me a check because we don't ask for donations.
That's your option.
We don't ask for donations, and people like our, our township fire companies look for those donations. We don't want to take it away from them either. We don't have paid fire companies. Well, Nishanik has a paid, mostly volunteer fire company, and we wouldn't take that away from them. But if somebody says, oh, you don't have to pay the five dollars, they're not going to write a check and send you twenty-five bucks because they have five cars. It isn't going to happen. And, and right now, you have this money in your budget. It isn't tax dollars you happen to collect. You had nothing to do with getting it here, and now you're going to take it away from the county. It doesn't make any sense to me, and I, I do believe, you know, that when you say it's a principle, it's a principle because you promised somebody you were going to remove it. And, and I just feel that it is a disservice to the, the taxpayers of Lawrence County to take four hundred thousand dollars away, that the state, obviously, and you were in there, so talking about term limits, you know, you were there, and I guess, I understand you voted no. But in all fairness, Chris, the state obviously found that this was a way of getting money to the, the communities without having to say, here, here's four hundred thousand dollars. You know how tough it is to grant? I've applied for five or six of them this year. And, and, and you almost have to stand on your head to get them, to get the money.
I'm going to get used to it.
You know, it's not like they hand money out and just go, here, Shannick Township, we think you need to, you know, fix your park, or fix your building, or fix the roads. There's, there's really no grants out there to get roads, roads fixed. There really isn't. And you would know that because you were, how many years, twenty-eight years at the state? And, and Lawrence County is not doing a whole heck of a lot better. And, and it's a shame. And there's a lot of tax dollars that goes into our county, and I know it's not to maintain the roads, but you have this ability to give us four hundred thousand dollars and spread it out amongst twenty-seven municipalities, and you're taking it away. I, I just don't understand it, I, I just think that it's, you're, you're not, it, it's political. It's no longer, we're, we're representing everybody, we're, we're representing who we promised that we were going to get the five dollars taken away from. And I think that that, that's a shame.
I represent eighty-six thousand people now, and I represent them all fairly and equally.
You represented eighty-six thousand people for a long time, and I know.
I represent sixty-two thousand.
Okay, so as a representative, you're sixty-two thousand. As a commissioner, you're eighty-six thousand, you should be more concerned about how, how to get more money into your community to help the roads, to make sure that we get economic development, to see the people, that the businesses grow. And, and businesses don't want to come here as it is. It's a struggle every day to get a business to come into this county. Every day. And believe me, you know, we don't sit in our municipalities and just do, you know, worry about the four hundred thousand dollars, we're worrying about everything. We have police protection, we have to, and I know you have a lot of things to do. But I just can't understand taking four hundred thousand dollars away from your taxpayers in Lawrence County. I mean, of the eighty-six thousand, do you have a majority that's saying, keep the five dollar, or take the five dollars away?
I've heard it from both ends.
So you have a majority, I just, I'm disappointed none of them are here.
How many do we have in this room? We have eighty-six thousand.
And none of them came here.
I've heard from many people. I never heard anyone telling me to keep it, except.
Except for everyone in the room.
Fairness, fairness is my name.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And then I'll get to Mr. Allegra next, yes, ma'am.
My name is Cynthia Hall, I'm in the Shannick Township. This is my first county commissioners meeting, and what I don't know about local politics spills volumes, literally, but I do know political bullcrap when I hear it. And Mr. Sonata, you should be ashamed of yourself. I sat here and listened to all of these really educated people make very cogent arguments, and you took it right to politics, and that wasn't necessary, and it's counterproductive. I think we're talking about the fact that everyone's here seems to agree and are giving you very good reasons why this should be here, and you're turning it into a circus. I'm really, I did vote for you. And, and I'm actually, right now, sorry that I did, I think that you're not paying attention to what you're hearing, you're not hearing these people, they're telling you very open, honest things, and you're pulling it into a bunch of nonsense. Listen to what's being said to you, listen to these people who are doing a very good job with these communities. How dare you not listen? I'm just very offended right now by you. So that's, can we please just go back to you stop interrupting people and listen? We tell little kids, shut them out, open the ears, that's all we want from you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Allegra.
David Allegra, township supervisor, Taylor Township. The only thing I'm going to say, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, Danny, I'm talking to you, because I've known you for a long time. We're one of the smallest communities in the county. So you know, we get the least amount of money because of how it's distributed, okay? By miles of road or assessment of property. I came to the commissioners last year to ask for some money because we're in a being forced to replace our sewer plant. Never heard another deal after that, never got a phone call, never got any answer. So all I'm going to say is, this is going to hurt us more than it is the majority. It's going to hurt everyone, but the smaller communities, it's going to hurt it worse than it is the bigger ones. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Allegra. Gary, and then, ma'am, I'll get to you next.
I got upwards of thirty vehicles, so I'm going to pay, I have an upwards of thirty vehicles that I pay on. So I'm going to pay five bucks, I have no problem with that. I got business guys in town that are paving contractors, general contractors that have multiple vehicles. None of them were complaining about paying the five bucks. That's all I'm telling them, they're all paying.
Thank you, Gary. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Shannon Tecker, I'm from here in Newcastle. I don't have any kind of position, I'm retired, I live on social security, so I'm low income. I mean, I don't understand all the ins and outs of that, but I don't think that there's any problem with five dollars. You know, what hurts me is my electricity and my gas have doubled from last year. And, and we're not getting anything back from that, are we? So I think this just seems more, you know, I just, so, five dollars is, is really nothing, even though, you know, I mean, I struggle every, every month to get through my social security check. I don't, I'm not worried about the five dollars, I'm worried about all, everything else that's gone up in price, that we're not getting anything back from.
Thank you very much for your comments, appreciate you being here. Yes, sir.
I swear I'm done.
You're fine, that's fine.
How has it changed? Four years ago today, I was addressed by the board of commissioners and sat down in a meeting with all of us. It was an amazing meeting, probably the best correspondence back and forth. In that four-year period, you and us fixed millions of dollars in problems in Shannick Township. And today, four years later, in a different board of commissioners, you're sitting here defending the roads. That's a big change in four years, guys.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Bear.
I'm not a supervisor, I don't have nothing to do with it. But the five dollars is nothing. And the four hundred thousand dollars he is bringing in, who's going to get that four hundred thousand dollars? If this is going to go away, some other county is going to get it. We're all worried to get the short end of the problem will stick with the three seventy-six being the toll road only in Orange County. Now you're, and it supports more Beaver County and Mercer County and Alzani County than it does Orange County. And now you're going to give him four hundred thousand dollars more, I just don't see it.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. George, Mr. Johnson.
George Johnson, supervisor of Slipper Rock Township. I'd ask that you not rescind ordinance four of two thousand and twenty. Slipper Rock Township's benefited immensely from this, this funding. It's really the fairest way that people that are using the road are paying this fee compared to the residents that do not have all the vehicles using the road and having to pay the offset amount in property tax. It's, again, we have benef, our residents have benefited immensely, and we're thankful for that. Just ask, please do not rescind it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Man, I was here, I was here last week, and I've spoken to you for a couple of years about this same issue. And last week, one of you, or Chris, said that this came from the legislature and was kicked down to the county commissioners. So now you're just kicking it down to the township, and that's all.
Thank you. Other comments? First of all, I, I do want to thank everybody for your interest and your professionalism and your courtesy today. I know this is an emotional issue. And I, I very much appreciate how we've all approached this in very businesslike manner, so thank you for that. Mr. Kennedy, I know you spoke, but please, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have to, they all did, I appreciate them, I'm here fighting, so, see what we can do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sonata?
No, I appreciate everyone's professionalism to watch, and I think it's important. And I think that this is what democracy is about, we had a meeting at the library last week talking about, this is democracy in action, you have the right to your opinion, you have the right to ours at the end. Majority's going to win.
Thank you. Before I make a couple of remarks, I just want to make certain that there are any other questions or comments. This will be brought up later in the meeting, although we have a fairly short agenda this morning. And there will be an opportunity for public comment prior to adjournment. I, I'm, I'm understanding of the roles that each of you play as elected municipal officials, because I was one in Shannick Township for twelve years. Those of you who are here who are elected officials, I, I understand the day-to-day responsibilities of cities, boroughs, and townships. And I've had to weigh the pros and cons of this matter. And I, I did that when it was first brought up in, in two thousand and twenty by the prior board of commissioners at that time. And I took into account the source of this money, the source of this five dollars is coming from each of our wallets, each of our pocketbooks. And when you couple that with the other sources of revenue that local government receives, on our case at county level, our primary source of revenue to do things here day in and day out is the property tax. Every municipality levies, with the exception of the borough of New Wilmington, the only municipality in the county that does not levy a property tax. The remaining twenty-six do, as does the county. So that's a source of revenue for all of us. Again, for us, it's our primary source of revenue. Municipalities and school districts also have the ability to levy a wage tax, which I believe just about everybody in every municipality in the county does that. And some municipalities, on top of that, levy a per capita tax. I know the community in which I live, I think it's fifteen dollars.
Per capita tax, that's a school district tax.
Okay.
And it's, I believe they refer it as a five-eleven tax, five dollars and ten dollars, and that goes to the school district.
The school district, thank you. I look at the fact that on top of that, every time we fill up our cars with gasoline, we do it here in Pennsylvania, and I think you know what I mean when I say that, because some of us live close enough to Ohio, let's face it. We're in Ohio or near Ohio, we take advantage of their lower gasoline tax. I do that sometimes. But every time we fill up our tanks, the state is taking a portion of that. And a portion of that does come back to each municipality, each of you get a liquid fuel check every year. The county gets liquid fuel dollars every year. And for decades, I think as far back as the nineteen fifties, what the county has done, not every year, but in most years, once they have been satisfied that there's been enough liquid fuel dollars to address the needs of the twenty-seven bridges that we own, from the standpoint of the inspection of those bridges, maintenance of those bridges, the repairs of those bridges, and in some instances, the replacement of those bridges. Once it's been determined that there are sufficient liquid fuel dollars at the county level to cover those bridge expenses, then the surplus dollars have then been distributed to the municipalities, or at least to those who have applied for those dollars, and it was noted last week. Almost every year, there have been a couple of exceptions where we've not been able to distribute liquid fuel dollars, but in most years, and incidentally, within the next two weeks, each of you will be getting another letter from our planning department, giving you the opportunity to apply for another round of liquid fuel funding. And we've done that as best we can each year, and the amount varies depending upon how much is in the fund, depending upon how much our bridges, bridge expenses might happen to be in a given year. It's interesting, there are some municipalities in this county who have chosen not to apply for liquid fuel funds. That's their decision, that's their right to do so. Other municipalities, to their credit, have applied each and every year, and I'm looking around the room, most everyone in this room has done so. So I look at the various funding sources that are available, that are in place. But what has, what has, what has been the most important factor as I've looked at this from day one? And I think you all know, and I know you don't agree with my point of view, but I have been consistent in my point of view from day one, when this was first proposed in late two thousand and twenty. It was passed by a two-to-one vote. Majority rule, that's, someone mentioned our democracy, that's a good thing. So I was on the low end of that vote. I kept going back to where are these dollars coming from? They're coming from the wallets and the pocketbooks of the, in this case, the car owners, or vehicle owners, I should say, in this county, who are already paying a gasoline tax when they fill their vehicles up, unless they own an electric vehicle. So I realize you could look at it from the standpoint, yes, that's four hundred thousand dollars less for the municipalities. I look at it from the standpoint, it's four hundred thousand dollars that remains in the wallets and the pocketbooks, and helps with people's utility bills, with their grocery bill. And I know it's only five dollars, but it's only, we're, we're getting to the point where these little it's onlys start to add up. So I know you're not going to like my decision, it's a consistent one, I can guarantee you that. Will we continue to work with the municipalities? And when we're able to provide them with the opportunity to apply for liquid fuel dollars, the answer, the simple answer is yes. And you should be getting a letter within the next two weeks. But I have to weigh all of that. And even though you don't like my decision, I hope you'll respect the fact that I put a lot of thought into it. Do either of my colleagues have anything else they wish to add?
I expected better.
I did too.
I apologize to you guys. Jordan rules. You all expect.
Did you listen to Janet?
I did, yes, ma'am, I listened to everybody today. Yes. Yes, ma'am, respectfully.
Just one last thing from the Shannick Township, and I guess I'll say from myself personally. No one would disrespect anybody from changing their mind based on your principal beliefs or making a campaign promise and changing your mind because you realize it's for the good of the community. I'm just curious, and I'm just speaking from the Shannick Township because I know what our assessment is in the Shannick Township. How, how much in tax dollars do you collect out of the Shannick Township for county tax? Just curious.
It's either, I don't know the dollar amount off the, off of my head, but.
I'm just curious what the dollar amount is.
I don't know the exact amount.
Because you're around eight mils, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, so, we collect for one mil about nine hundred thousand, so with eight mils, you, you make a lot of decisions with tax dollars from Lawrence County, and you don't, don't ever consider the people, I mean, you're raising wages, there's a lot of things that go on during the year, but this is a five dollar fee that is assessed, it's not a tax. Because when I just got my registration, it's fifty dollars, forty-five of it goes to the state. I don't know what they're doing with it. Five dollars, we know what's happening with that five dollars, and we know that it is helping the roads in Lawrence County. I get that you don't have to, you're not obligated to do anything for roads, your obligation is bridges. We get that, we all understand that. The one problem is bridges last a heck of a lot longer than a road does. We're not putting in concrete roads because we would never be able to afford to do that. Your bridges, on the other hand, can last forty, fifty years, you're inspecting them. And I'm sure there's a great cost to the inspections, because we inspect our bridges as well. It's only five dollars to stay in our community. I would respect more that you changed your opinions than to take this away from. than to take this away from the municipalities. And, you know, there's not a person here from Lawrence County that's standing in here, other than the two of you, and I don't know, maybe Joe or Vanessa agree, I don't know that, that want you to repeal this ordinance. So I just, you know, it was a huge group of people. We're talking to you because you're representing us. And I think I would respect more, and respectfully, I understand the job you have to do. I've been doing this a long time, I know what you have to go through. It's just, this is for Lawrence County, the people of Lawrence County, and the roads of Lawrence County. It's just, it just seems hard to believe that you can't change your mind when you see everybody in this room asking you to not repeal it.
Thank you. Mrs. Burket?
Director Burket, the Shannick. I believe that if there were people in this room who are in favor of rescinding the assessment, they would feel intimidated to speak up. And I can commiserate with the commissioners who have that, who have to listen to reiteration of viewpoints. So when it comes to viewpoints, I think that they are just viewpoints and they need to be respected. I just think that there are people who are for rescinding it.
Thank you, and again, I'm very mindful of the passion behind the viewpoints that folks have expressed today. That shows how seriously they take their roles as local municipal officials and those who are not municipal officials as residents of this county. And I think Mr. Augustine would like to speak.
Yes, yeah, thank you. I'm Frank Augustine from Shenango Township. I wasn't here last week, and I heard it from Al and what went on here. And this is eight years I've been a Shenango Township supervisor. I inherited a mess, okay? I inherited a mess. And we've given our best out there. Dan, I worked with the commissioners, we worked together. We had an issue with Shenango, like Brandon mentioned earlier. But I tell you what, right now, I'm just disappointed, all right? Just disappointed that you have all the elected officials right here. We're the guys on the front lines. We're the ones that are out there that see people at McDonald's, see people at restaurants, that have to put up with these, with everything right now. And we're doing the best we can. Public safety is the most important for us. And roads in Shenango Township have gone so much better since we're able to use this money. Right now, I'm a grandpa. I gotta leave. When I leave and go pick up my grandkids, I know that this road is safe. We've done a beautiful job fixing the roads out here with money that you helped us out with. And we appreciate everything you do. But this isn't political, all right? This is my life. This is what I do every day. I've had a business in this community for years. And it just doesn't make sense that this group of people that represent everybody in Lawrence County has to deal with this. I'm sorry, it is not political. I'm gonna have to raise taxes. We're gonna have to raise taxes, two, whatever it is, how many mils out?
.2 mils.
And I'm gonna deal with that every day. But I'd rather pay that money and have safe roads for me to go pick up with my grandkids. Thank you, I have to leave, because I, like I said, I am an old grandpa. All right, very good, thank you.
Mr. Semada?
I still, you know, say this, that the impression this money's leaving Lawrence County, it's not leaving Lawrence County, it's staying in the taxpayer's pocket. I just want to make sure that, like, the state doesn't think that any of this money
Yeah, but it brings in grant money.
No, no, it doesn't.
You can't even buy a gallon of milk for $5.
But it's irresponsible, how are decisions made when they want?
Thank you, Mr. Semada. Yes, sir, Mr. Rischel.
I ask any decisions like this in the future, have the common decency and respect for the people in this room, that before the day it goes on the agenda, that talk to us of the money you're taking away from our communities. You didn't have utmost respect to sit down with us individually and make the decision that you two men are doing today. That is the only thing that I'm truly hurt by, Dan, because we've had an unbelievable working relationship. You put it on an agenda because it's political from the two of you, and that's the only reason we're sitting here today. Not one of us got contacted to say, hey, guys, just so you know, in your budgets, this money's gonna go away. And I'm hurt by that, from you, Dan.
Why don't you put it on the ballot? If you're not worried about it being political, put it on the ballot.
I can answer that. I did ask that question. Let's put it out to the people.
That's right.
Because it's a fee, we cannot put it on the ballot. It has to be a tax, and it is not, I'll repeat this, it is not a tax. It's a user fee.
Right.
We cannot put it on the ballot. Because that was the first question I asked our solicitor. What can we do? He said you can't do it, so.
So yet again, the property owners have to pay the burden of everybody. If that's more in our community, this is what you get.
That's why West County is where it's at.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question as a consumer.
Could you identify yourself?
Amy Stapleton. I live in Mahoney Township.
Thank you, thank you.
However, I don't comprehend, and I do finances, I run West Banko. I, you know, I've dealt with the commissioners for eight years, I've been there. I deal with the townships. I know Frank personally, I've dealt with him since I was very young and his dad had the pizza shop. He's right, he's been in business here a long time. I think you should raise it to $10. I know that's against everything that you're trying to do. But guess what? I have hit holes in this county that have drowned my car. And if you swerve to miss them and you hit another car, well, then there's my insurance going up. I don't understand where it's even an issue. I mean, to be honest with you, obviously, I pay it on seven cars at my house. But if nobody, you know, usually, this should be the room of people arguing with you. I just don't comprehend why you would take it or why it's even political, but I'm not politically minded. But I, guess what? All these people in Newcastle that you think are in Newcastle City doing the whole townships, that's the only thing they pay for, because most of them are renters. I pay property taxes. I'm sure that everybody sitting in this room pays property taxes. You're gonna raise my property taxes over $5? I gotta say, I'm not impressed as a resident. And these people in Newcastle, where are they? I don't see anybody here that's representing the cloud of people that don't own property, because they don't care if it goes up .20 or whatever it goes up. So I think that it should be put on a latter date, and you should put it out to the community. Let people show up that don't understand it's even going on. I came today because it was the first one we could make it to this year, because I wanted to get to meet all the commissioners that were just appointed. Obviously, Dan, you're familiar with us. I know why there are so many people in this room. And I couldn't find a parking spot, and I understand why. But I just think it's ridiculous that you would even try to get rid of it. And I'm not here as a representative of anything, but, I mean, come on, $5. I don't want my $5 back, what am I gonna do with $0.42? I can't even buy a pack of gum anymore. I just don't understand where the consumer understands that that's what you're doing. Because here we go again. So my tires on my car are $1,000 to replace. Every time you hit one of those puddles, throws it out of line, your tires need replaced. I mean, it's just, my personal opinion is it's ridiculous to take it away. I stand behind the townships.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, thank you all so much. We're gonna continue with our meeting, you're all very welcome to stay. If you have to leave, we certainly understand. We are down to fiscal and contractual. I would do would be the warrant registers. The warrant registers are the listing of bills that have been paid by the Comptroller's Office. These are dated January 23, 24, and 25. Give my colleagues time to look these over, and unless you have any questions, whenever you're ready, I could take a motion to accept these.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Any questions on these documents? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We have the minutes of last Tuesday's meeting in our packet, gentlemen. If you'd like to look them over. And once you've done so, I could take a motion to approve the minutes.
You're welcome, have a good day.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, gentlemen. There are no other questions or concerns, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes. The next item would be presentation of written communications. Glad our friends from Slipper Rock Township are here, because both these documents pertain to the township. The first is correspondence from Gateway Engineers out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, dated January 5, in reference to Living Treasures Wild Animal Park. This is a notification that the park is applying for a water quality management Part I permit renewal. Site location is 268 Fox Road in Slipper Rock Township, Lawrence County. And this application is going to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. The law stipulates that counties are to be notified of actions such as this. So we receive these documents and make them part of the record. We don't have any authority over how it's carried out, just that we are officially notified by the applicant. That's the first one. The second one is from RAR Engineering, based in Newcastle. Again, also in the township of Slipper Rock. The project name is 422 Aggregates Inc., specifically the Laco Mine. This is a, it are adding 14.7 acres of non-coal surface mining area to amend an existing permit for 74 acres on this particular parcel. And that's the purpose of the notification, is noting that this property is being added. And this is signed by Marco Fox, the engineering representative for RAR. And this application goes to the Department of Environmental Protection. Is there a motion to accept both of these pieces of correspondence?
I move to accept them.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Comments or questions, gentlemen? Our friends from Slipper Rock Township, I believe you received these as well. So we do have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. There are no other concerns. I'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next on the agenda would be the commissioner reports and comments. We take time each week for each commissioner to offer any comments he would wish to make. And Mr. Semada, you get to go first today.
I think we've had enough comments.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comment, are there any comments from Mr. Kennedy?
None.
Thank you, sir. I will note that since we met last week, we did have an opportunity to go down to the Newcastle Public Library. They had a program on civics and social discourse, and we spent probably a good hour and a half down there talking to some students who are homeschooled, as well as some folks in the community. We discussed the role of county commissioner and what our responsibilities are. So we appreciate that the library hosted us. Those are my comments at this time. Under new business, we have a proposal from Lawrence County Social Services, but I don't see anybody here for that. This involves the Senior Citizen Nutritional Shopping Program that they undertake. And generally, we ask that the agency that comes before us with requests like this, attend in person in case we have any questions. Recognizing that you, gentlemen, are still relatively new, I'm gonna throw out the option. We can either act on this today, if you so choose, or we could table it and ask them to come to our meeting next week. I'll respect your preference, Mr. Kennedy.
I'll make a motion if they want, I have no idea if this is a motion.
Okay, second. Thank you, thank you both. To move to table this proposed resolution? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will say, this organization is usually always here. They're usually very good about attending, maybe something came up. Vanessa, could we maybe ask them if they can join us next Tuesday? Thank you. We move down. That was actually the only item of new business this morning, other than this upcoming ordinance. And we've had a great deal of discussion on it. And what we have on the table is proposed ordinance number one of 2024, which would rescind Lawrence County ordinance number four of 2020. In order for us to consider this proposal, we would need to have a motion to first remove it from the table. Would someone care to make that motion? Thank you, Mr. Semada, is there a second? I will offer the second. Take a vote on taking it off the table. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes. Thank you. And then for final action, proposed ordinance number one of 2024. Remove this into the record, it's an ordinance rescinding Lawrence County ordinance number four of 2020, which implemented a fee for local use as provided by 75 BAC S1935, allowing a county in its discretion to impose a county fee of $5 for each non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located within its quarters. I'll also note, as I did last week for the record, that this proposed ordinance was advertised in the Newcastle News in the legal section, as per the sunshine law. It's now up for final considerations. This is proposed ordinance number one, would one of you care to make a motion for it?
I move that we approve ordinance number one of 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second? Hearing none, I will offer the second. Gentlemen, any final discussion on the proposed ordinance, Mr. Kennedy?
No. I'm just, I'm disappointed. We're putting Lawrence County backwards, not forwards. You guys don't get it, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Mr. Semada?
I think that we've had enough discussion today. We want to thank people for their support.
Thank you, sir. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under announcements, the commissioners will convene again a week from today, on February 6, 10 a.m., the meeting is open to the public. And as we mentioned earlier, the Lawrence County Opioid Advisory Board meeting is not today. It is one week from today, Tuesday, February 6, 12 noon, in this room, and it is open to the public. Before we adjourn, we will open the meeting again for any public comments the folks might have. Oh, Leslie, and then Mrs. Burket.
Just want to say, I'm truly disappointed. I know you look forward to the vote, I think that's even more disappointing to me. And again, you know, we go, I've gone more times in the last year to some of our state representatives and our, the SPC, I've talked to different people. And all of them have said, you've got to get the commissioners behind you. If your commissioners don't support your programs and don't support your projects, then you're not going to get funded. And here we are, in 2024, in the, not even the second month, here we are in the first month, already saying $400,000 isn't important to the communities. And I just, I'm truly disappointed in your action today. And I think that, you know, I think that the county needs to look a little bit harder at what you're doing with the money that's here. And like I said, this money wasn't costing you a dime, unless you have a vehicle. And like I said, this money wasn't costing you a dime unless you have a vehicle. But you had the right to sit up here and make a decision to take it away from the roads in Lawrence County. And I think that that part is what is so disheartening. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Witche, Mrs. Burkett, and then I'll do Mr. Baer next.
I have a question about the warrants that you approve each week. Those are checks that have already been written, is that correct?
Yes.
Then what is your role? Because, you know, if there is objection, it can't be made now.
There's a process that's followed in advance of this happening. If a department incurs an expense, any of our departments, they have to fill out what's known as a purchase order. And the purchase order indicates what it is they want to spend the money on, what the dollar amount is, who the vendor might be, and what line item it's coming from, from their particular department or office budget. That purchase order document first goes to the county controller's office. They look it over to verify that it's a legitimate expense, number one. Number two, they make certain that the line item, they identify the line item, make certain there's enough money in the line item to cover the expense. So they sign off on either the controller or one of his deputy's initials, the purchase order. The purchase order then comes up to the commissioner's office. And either Mr. Vanasco, in his capacity as the county administrator, and/or Mrs. Bayless, in her capacity as the deputy county administrator, they do likewise. So there's already been two sets of eyes on this document. And they initial it. Then, the three commissioners, it comes to us. As long as two of us sign the purchase order, then the expense can be made. If only one of us signs it, it's not legitimate. You have to have at least two commissioners sign the document. Then it goes back to the controller's office and they proceed accordingly in paying the bill, for lack of a better term. And then they put together this document showing what it is they pay. Last week, for example, we commented, it was either last week or the week before, periodically, the folks who are foster parents receive their payment. Those, actually names of those foster parents show up on this document. One of the documents here today, if I'm reading this correctly, a number of municipalities received money which I think is coming from the tax claim office for delinquent taxes that have been collected. And these documents are available to anybody to look at. So that's the process. And Joe, did I leave anything out?
No.
I don't know, thank you.
Well, that means that every agent or every department, anytime they write out, read out a check, it has to go through that process.
The departments don't write the checks. They request that the checks be written. That's where the controller's office, and then the treasurer's office as well. But no department can write its own check. They don't have, they don't each have their own checking account. It all funnels through the controller's office.
Okay, so everything they, every time they need something for their office or for a procedure, every time, they have to make a purchase order?
That is correct.
Okay.
They need to buy stationery or pens or staplers. They have to make a purchase order. And it goes through every, whether it's, if it's a $10 expense, if it's a $30,000 expense, they all go through that process.
So you're okayed at once, and then when it comes through again, then you're okay again?
That is correct. And there have been times, and there probably will be times, when we'll look through here and we might say, well, we need a little more information on that. So sometimes we'll put a hold on accepting this document, we'll talk to the controller, and more often than not, we get a good explanation from the controller's office. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Did Mr. Baer have his hand up? Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I'm awfully disappointed in your decision. Of all the people here, you and Mr. Sonata are the only two that were in favor of rescinding this. And I don't think you're representing the people when you do something like this. And if there was people that wanted to rescind it, they didn't put the effort in to come to the meeting and state their claim. I think you're making a very, very big mistake. And the next time somebody hits a pothole, they're gonna blame you guys.
Thank you, sir. Other comments or questions? Closing comments from my colleagues, Mr. Sonata?
Everyone acted in a very professional manner. We're gonna continue to work together as a board. I haven't had a difference today, but then as we work on working together tomorrow and the projects that we have in mind, and I just respect Dan's opinions as well as both of them. So I just want that to be known, that we don't take any of this personally. We move on to the next issue and we'll continue to work for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Sonata. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Joe or Vanessa, anything we've overlooked to your knowledge? Thank you all. We appreciate you all joining us today. And there hope to be no other businesses to be brought before the board. I would request an adjournment motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you both, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, the same time, the meeting is adjourned. The tape, or the recording is still on until Joe turns it on. Thank you all.